Countdown. Five, four.
Yep. Right. It's a red light. Well, I'm waiting for... Can I go ahead and go, Matt? Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to Albany City Council Meeting this Wednesday, May 11th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and would you please all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allison, maybe have a roll call, please. Cannot hear you.
So, I'm here.
Tech support.
Sure, absolutely.
Technology.
Okay, better. Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski. Counselor Johnson. Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
So, I'm happy to announce the next agenda item. It's a special presentation, If I Were the Mayor contest winners, and Matt Harrington is going to assist us in this process. I do want to say that the contest was amazing. I visited every school and talked to these young people, and they have a lot of great ideas, and they have passion about their city, and they're fun. They did a lot of great things with their posters and their essays, but I'm happy to announce that we have our winners here tonight, and Matthew, please do your honors.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor and Council. No doubt, you've heard about the If I Were Mayor contest by now, and we are lucky to have our two winners of the elementary school and middle school age groups with us tonight. And so first, I'm going to call up Brynlee Washburn. She is our elementary school winner. Come on up, Brynlee. And so I think Kenzie's going to put her... There we go. Just going to put her poster up on screen so everybody else can see it, and you guys can all see it here. So Brynlee, why don't you go ahead and tell us about your poster? And it looks like you have kind of four main ideas that you had if you were mayor. You want to take the mic?
So, before I present my poster, I just want to say, the reason why I joined this contest is because I wanted to make this place a better place, so I made this. So, my first idea was the community garden. So, there is... So, basically, the community garden is a place where anybody can plant food. And the food is for the homeless, because usually they don't have enough money to buy food, so I want to do the community garden, so then the homeless can have some food. The next thing is a meet and greet. So, the meet and greet is a monthly thing where one month it can be the mayor, one month it can be the city council, anybody, anybody, anybody. The student press conference is for students can come to the city hall and ask questions and ask what their opinion is about the place and their opinions about the place. The service tree... Okay. The service tree is one of my favorites. Like, I really like the idea of the service tree. So, the service tree will be planted by city hall, and people can go to the service tree. There'll be some things that you can put on the service tree, like ornaments or something, and you can write your service that you need, and you hang it on, and then once the city tree is full with services, we all get in a group and celebrate, like have a little party. And we each take a tag, and we do that thing for the person. And the reason why I love service the most is because it brings people together and it makes... When you do a service for somebody, in my opinion, when I do it, like a service for my mom, dad, my four brothers that I have, even myself, like I like doing services for everybody, even my... Even people I don't know. I love doing services. It just makes me happy, and it make... Like, I know that I'm helping somebody, so it makes me smile and feel great about myself. And I have little things that have it, like activities, contact, share, cake and kindness, family service, good place, care, strength, friends, helping, peace, neighbor, all sorts of stuff on it, so that is why I should be mayor.
Thank you, Brynlee. Okay, thank you, Brynlee. All right, so... Do a little tech support at the same time. All right, and next, we have our middle school winner, Michaela Chafens, and I'm going to ask her to come up and read her essay that she wrote for the middle school category. And she's joined by her mother.
Hello? Okay, there we go. Good evening. My name is Michaela Chafens. I'm an eighth grader at North Albany Middle School, and here's my essay. If you were mayor of your town, what would you do? Mayors have the important job of leading the city and representing the people. From voting in council meetings to addressing the needs of their town, they ensure that every city runs smoothly. They have the crucial task of collaborating with the city government on how to best assist the community. If I were the mayor of my town, Albany, I would elect and appoint citizens to commissions to better reflect the people that we serve, improve equal education, and help minority entrepreneurs pursue a successful future. First of all, I would work to bridge the gap between males and females in the city government. Half of Albany's population is female, but only 40% of the commission members are women. This does not represent Albany's people. As mayor, I would appoint more qualified female members to commissions until it better reflects the people of Albany, since women and men have different views based on their experiences. Second, I would appoint more minorities to commissions to reflect the diversity of Albany. This is important because minorities and people of color have challenges that may not be addressed unless they have representation. Having more minorities in city government will create more voices to act towards solving these problems that impact so many members of our town. Third, I would pursue higher equal education for minorities of Albany. 11.4 of Albany's citizens speak a language other than English at home, yet there is only one middle school and one high school in our town with an English learning program. This makes it more difficult for students to learn English when their family has to find transportation for them across the entire town daily. As mayor, I would make sure that every school from junior high up has free transportation to schools with English programs. This is important because students who are not fluent in the language used to educate them will struggle more in school. In addition, many college students end up with debt following them for a large amount of their lives after graduation. As mayor, I would establish high school programs about career paths and the costs associated with college, and alternatively, trade schools. Trade schools are especially important because they can create high-paying jobs without requiring a full four-year college education. This will give more opportunities to minorities who may not be able to afford expensive colleges and help to better prepare students for life after graduation. Fourth, I would work to create more entrepreneurial opportunities for minorities. Out of over 3,000 business firms in Albany, 10% of them are minority-owned. This does not match the 15% of Albany's population that are minorities. To have the percentage of minority businesses match the number of minorities in the population, I want to form initiatives to create 150 new minority businesses. In order to have more minority businesses, I need an accessible way to teach minorities about entrepreneurship. I would create classes at Lynn Benton Community College for small businesses and entrepreneurs. This class can help the nearly 300 minority-run businesses in Albany grow to a larger number that represents the 15% of Albany's population that are minorities. In conclusion, if I were mayor of Albany, I would prioritize diversity, education, and entrepreneurship. People feel most represented when they look to their leaders and see someone like themselves. As a minority of women, I see groups of government officials, and very few minorities and women are present. As part of the new generation, I believe that a greater understanding of each other can lead to better solutions for us all. My actions as mayor will set a path towards greater diversity, education, and entrepreneurship with the hopes to improve the lives and futures of Albany residents. Thank you.
And thank you again, Michaela. And this was the first year that we participated in this contest in Albany in any kind of concerted way, and we had a good turnout. We're looking forward to running this contest again next year. What ended up happening is we sent our winners along to the statewide competition, and we're pleased to announce that Michaela's essay finished third in the state, so... She'll be recognized at the Oregon Mayors Association Conference later this summer, so congratulations again to Michaela and Brynlee, and thank you for coming. And now your input is in the record for all time at the City of Albany.
So, I want to thank both of you for the work that you did, and I was honored to meet both of you and your parents, and I hope to see your essays again in the future or your presentations again. But one thing I really want you to know is that you did an amazing job, both of you.
Yes.
And thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us. So, thank you very much. Big round of applause. Matt has to do some housekeeping, and then we'll... Okay. So, I want to give Matt a kudos also. He followed me to all the schools and kept me out of trouble, so I'm going to thank him for that. But one thing he did tell me, "Mayor, stop asking, is there any more questions?" So, the next presentation is Proclamations. Counselor Matilda Novak is going to read the Historic Preservation Month proclamation, and after that, Peter Trosen will be doing a special presentation. Is it coming up?
Not yet.
Where'd Matt go? Cleveland? There we go.
Oh, he saw... He ran away.
There he is.
Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973 to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation, and whereas Historic Preservation Month can raise awareness of local historic buildings and landmarks in the residents of Albany and surrounding communities, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, walks of life, and backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a community, and whereas Albany includes four national historic districts, featuring the greatest number of historic styles in the state of Oregon, the site of the first airplane built and flown in Oregon, and the state's oldest farmer's market, and is the first recipient of the Heritage All-Star Community Designation in Oregon. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Historic Preservation Month in Albany, and I encourage all residents to take time this month to appreciate Albany's many historic resources and to participate in activities celebrating our heritage. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 11th day of May 2022. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Novak. Peter? Our city manager, Peter Trosen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on the... Thank you, Counselor Novak, for reading that proclamation. You know, on the history... On the occasion of Historic Preservation Month, it's really a pleasure to be able to recognize what's often called a public-private partnership. I think just about everybody in Albany knows the Cumberland Church, right? Its distinctive shape is pretty eye-catching, and six months ago, it caught attention because it moved, or it was moved, about three blocks down Saniam Avenue to its new home on the corner of Pine Street and Saniam Road. The Cumberland Church is a historic building, but it hasn't seen a congregation inside its walls for years. The city acquired the building in 2008 because we needed the property to make improvements to the intersection at Saniam Road and Main Street. And now, while we all appreciate historic buildings, the funding to take on the repair and renovation of that historic building weren't available in the city's budget. Many people had ideas about how the church building should be used, and it appeared many times on social media. And when I got to town five years ago, that was one of the first things I saw on a little-known site, little-known to me, called HH Today. It wasn't until 2018 that the Cumberland Community Events Center, as an association, was formed, and its mission was to take on the project of saving this 130-year-old church. Emma Eaton stepped up and led this effort. And what is so wonderful about this is that it's entirely supported by community members, by volunteers. The city, all of us, all of us who live in the city, not just the council and staff, we helped by selling the building for $1 and by selling land onto which the church could be moved. But if it were not for the Cumberland Community Events Center, this building would have continued to deteriorate and would not, and would not be well on its way, as it is today, to becoming a real cultural asset for Albany. So, tonight, we're going to unveil a special framed piece that will commemorate this effort. And Emma, this might be a surprise to you. I hope you'll come up here and join me. And if you would take this side, I'll take this side, and we've got to be very careful about lifting this up. We don't want this framed picture to come tumbling down. All right? Here we go. Just drop it right there. Okay, here on the left, and I'll explain this a little bit to you, is the bill of sale for the building. The photo of the church as it looked last year, sitting where it did, up here. And then there's a rendition, an artist's rendition of what it's going to look like right here. Hopefully, we're going to replace that with a photograph in the future. And in the middle is a $1 coin minted in 1892, the same year that the church was built. Now, normally, the finance director would take revenues that come in from sales and put them into our account, but this one's going to be framed and displayed prominently in city hall. And I've got to thank Cameron Settlemeyer for providing that $1. So, there's a citation here that says, and I'll read it to you. "To commemorate the purchase of the Albany Cumberland Church on Sunday, October 17th, 2021, the building was moved to the corner of Saniam and Pine Street, where it will continue to serve the Albany community well into the future as the Cumberland Community Events Center. The City of Albany is grateful to the volunteers and contributors of the Cumberland Community Events Center for their dedication to preserving Albany's heritage through the restoration of the church building and for their spirit of support and cooperation." Now, the Albany Area Chamber of Commerce recognized Emma earlier, last month, with their Distinguished Service Award for her efforts. And in the proclamation that you just heard Counselor Novak read, you heard reference to the importance of celebrating, and I quote, "the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a community." So, Emma, thank you for all you've done to make sure that this happened. I know you'll say, you'd be the first to say, it's a team effort, and there are a lot of individuals who weighed in on this, but we all thank you. And let's have a round of applause for you.
Joel, would you mind coming up here? I will not stand alone here because I did not do this by myself. There are other people that are working tirelessly to make this happen, and those... There are more people that gave us what they could afford, when they couldn't afford, than gave us a lot of money. That, to me, shows a strong community support. Thank you.
Birthday, 130th birthday being celebrated this coming Saturday and the following Saturday at the site, so noon to 2:00. Some music, refreshments, all for free, a little bit of history, and hope for sunshine.
I will also say that this effort has been a long time in the making, and during part of that effort, Sharon Canopa was mayor of Albany, and the mayor and the council have invited her to say a few words. So, you will see that Ms. Canopa is joining us virtually. Mayor?
Thank you, Sharon.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Well, it is with great pleasure to be here and congratulate the Cumberland Community Events Center volunteers who've worked so tirelessly on making the church move, and it's been a lot of hurdles to get over, but, boy, it's been wonderful. But I love Peter mentioning the history of the church, and it has been... I was thinking, it's been five years now since we formed the work group to see what the future should be for the Cumberland Church. And, you know, thinking back then, I would have never thought the location we had was going to end up working out. We had other locations that were identified, but everybody that worked together on it, really checking the feasibility and to see what was going to be the, you know, best location for the church and what was more doable, and it was a great location that the work group had chosen to have it moved to Pine Street on our City Park property. It kind of... After that, things kind of idled a bit, but I tell you, when Emma grabbed on to it and just moved forward, she was not going to give up, and we are so blessed in our community to have Emma and all the volunteers and, you know, Joel and Cameron and Karen and everyone. I know I'm missing many that have been involved, even back when Ed Hogney was Parks Director. He was so very supportive, but Emma's just done a great job. I'm so grateful for her determination to get the church moved, and... But we can always sort of that big first hurdle to get over, and she made it happen. But it's also the great partnership with the city, too, to be able to have worked, to be able to provide the land and being in support of getting the church, you know, moved for a community center. So, it's sort of the Cumberland has been sort of sleeping for years, and now it's time to be alive again, and I hope that partnership continues, and because this is a great asset and for historic preservation for our community. So, thank you. Thank you, Emma and everyone, and thank you for City of Albany.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And before I give the mic back, I'll ask Matt to come and help me safely move this picture out of the way.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. So, next, after this is moved, are you reading Public Works? Who's reading Public Works? Counselor Bartholomew's going to read Public Works proclamation.
Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022. Whereas public works professionals are employees at all levels of government who are responsible for building, improving, operating, and maintaining our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste facilities, all essential for residents, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of critical importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and community well-being, and whereas such infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, and whereas May 15th through the 21st, 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas it is at the public interest... It is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children of our community to lean more, to learn more about public works and gain a deeper understanding of the importance of public works programs and services. and services. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, 2022, as Public Works Week. In Albany, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with our Public Works services and to recognize the contributions that Public Works employees make every day to our community's health, safety, economic vitality, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor.
Thank you. And Counselor Johnson will be reading the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Week. We had to fight over this one because I ride motorcycles, so yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, May 2022. Whereas Oregon is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety education, and whereas Oregon was the first state to develop its own proprietary training curricula for motorcycle safety, and whereas motorcyclists in Oregon recognize the responsibility to be properly trained in a safe operation of their motorcycles, and whereas it is important that Oregon residents be aware of motorcycles on the highways and recognize the need to share the roadway with these fuel-efficient vehicles, and whereas the Designation of Motorcycle Safety Award Awareness Month promotes public awareness of the energy-efficient motorcycle and its proper and safe use on the roads and highways of Oregon. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor of Albany, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Albany, Oregon, and I encourage all residents to join in this observance. In witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor.
And thank you very much, Counselor. Next is Counselor Ray Kobsensky with Military Appreciation Month.
Whereas the United States Congress passed a resolution in 1999 proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling on all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in the defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of the United States Armed Forces who have served and are now serving our country. And whereas local jurisdictions have the responsibility and privilege to raise respect for this aspect of the United States heritage and to encourage the residents of every community to dedicate themselves to the principles for which Americans have served throughout the history of our nation. And whereas the sense of freedom and love of country that the United States citizens enjoy today are the result of the personal sacrifice and ongoing vigilance of members of our armed forces and by the family members who support them. And whereas United States veterans and current members of our armed forces have made the world more secure and have demonstrated that freedom should be cherished and appreciated by all. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Military Appreciation Month in Albany. In Albany, Oregon, and I encourage all residents to recognize the valor of our resident, of veterans and the sacrifices made by our military personnel and their families through personal thanks and words of gratitude to those we know who have served or are currently serving. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Kobsensky. And next, I would like to first give a round of applause to Albany's Police Department. Police Week, May 11th, 2022, to May 16th, 2022. Whereas the week of May 11th through 16th, 2022 is dedicated as National Police Week. And whereas May 15th of each year is National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state, and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 55 hours. Since, and since the first known line-of-duty death was in 1786, more than 22,000 U.S. law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas law enforcement officers, including City of Albany police officers, are the guardians of life and property and defenders of our individual freedom. And whereas Albany is proud of our law enforcement officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to public safety, excuse me, to the public safety profession. And whereas Albany Police Department is, and its officers provide the highest quality services and are committed to the highest professional standards, working in partnership with our community to reduce crime, create a safe environment, and improve our quality of life. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through the 16th of 2022 Police Week. In Albany, Oregon, to call attention to Albany's police officers for their outstanding service they provide to our community, I also call upon our residents and our businesses to express thanks to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in, in safety each day, knowing they are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard them against all who violate law. I, in witness whereof, I here to set my hand and, and cause the seal of Albany, the City of Albany, to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2022. Alexander D. Johnson, II, Mayor. Thank you. And with that, I will follow, next to General Island Special Presentation, the Albany Police Department Annual Awards. Chief Marsha Harden.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. We're going to take up a sizable amount of time because there's a sizable amount of special awards to hand out tonight that I'm very proud to be a part of. We have a saying, for those of you who have been blessed to be in our beautiful building that the taxpayers provided, we have a saying that is in, up on the wall on our second level. It says, "Bravery is not the absence of fear, but the action in the face of fear." And that has resonated with me since I came to Albany two and a half years ago. And I'll open really quickly with just kind of a summary of how proud that this city should be of their police officers. This past year's been challenging to many of us in the community. The Albany Police Department has seen and experienced many of these same challenges. As you listen to the summaries of the awards that I'm about to cover, I hope you experience the same level of pride I have for the exceptional actions of these public servants. Many people outside of profession may not know the danger and the complexity of what they face every day and the strength it takes to navigate these situations. These awards will give you a small glimpse into their world. After reviewing these awards, I am proud to be their chief. I am proud to wear the same badge and the same patch, and I'm proud of each and every one of them. The citizens of Albany should have every reason to be proud as well. Kenny Allen. Wow, you lost the tie? Wow, he had, he had the, the best, I know, Seahawks-colored tie, so, all right. All right, this is CISO Kenny Allen. He is a rock star. He provides direct, immediate support to our team to help with traffic collisions, animal control issues, code compliance, or code enforcement challenges, and most significantly, with our burgeoning homeless issues. He volunteers or shows up without prompting and remains on scene for whatever time necessary is to assist. Kenny is focused on service both outside and inside our department. There is never a task too small, difficult, or challenging that he will not accept and follow through to completion. Throughout this year and since he's worked at the department, I've tried to recruit him numerous times for the sworn side, but he keeps saying no. Community Service Officer Kenny Allen has demonstrated a positive attitude and eagerness to learn and grow, as well as a desire to help others. Kenny is constantly on the street and focused on increasing the livability of our community. And Kenny Allen is our Support Service employee of 2021. Saw you. There you go. Officer Sam Posuma, now currently an acting sergeant for us, is a very active officer. His wealth of knowledge regarding tactics and criminal investigation have been invaluable. Sergeant Posuma is thoroughly committed to being an educated, informed, forward-thinking trainer, both as a firearms trainer and a field training officer. His expertise as SWAT team leader has provided the department with great training and tactical advantage. In addition, Sergeant Posuma's skill as a tactician helps our team safely respond to challenging and dangerous situations. He is a self-starter who not only focuses on follow-up, but also on the importance of following through to completion. Sergeant Posuma demands quality of himself. That is shown in his excellent work product, whether it be training, report writing, or investigations. And most of my staff doesn't know this, he knows this, but he's so highly regarded that the Lynn County Sheriff's Office, who commands our SWAT team, has asked that he be their assistant commander for the entire team, which is a huge honor, so. So a little bit ago, Laura's like, I didn't even know it was getting an award, I was taking pictures. So, surprise. Laura Hawkins is our Community Education Specialist. Recently had a title change, I can't even remember it so long, but she's really taken on more work for us and, and very much appreciate that. She began her career with Albany Police Department in September of 2013 as a police clerk. She was promoted to Crime Prevention Specialist and then Community Engagement Program Coordinator due to her innovative ideas, taking the department into the future. She has single-handedly ensured the department remained engaged in local, state, and national-sponsored events, coffee with a cop, shop with a cop. To add one more bill duty, she has recently been selected to be the face of the Albany Police Department as our Public Information Officer. Laura's innovative ideas surround the department's presence on social media. Laura has made a substantial and positive impact to the department, community, and the law enforcement profession worldwide. I think we have, how many followers on TikTok?
750,000.
Yeah, woo, so. All right, I'll take a second for everybody to come up here. Officer Brett Adams, Officer Aaron Bagley, Officer Trevor Eaton, Officer Ken Fandrum, Officer Gabe Flores, Officer Peter Teague, Officer Perry Baker, and Sergeant Mike Wood. So this is one of those events where you really don't realize how quickly things can turn dangerous on you, so we're happy to hand out this award. On February 21st, 2022, officers responded to a disturbance call. It was reported that a subject with a katana-type sword was menacing bystanders and nearby vehicles. It was later determined the subject was actually chasing people with a sword. After being engaged by Sergeant Mike Wood, the subject was uncooperative and refused commands. Officer Trevor Eaton deployed a less-lethal beanbag shotgun. Officer Brett Adams deployed his taser, and Officer Bagley deployed his firearm. After being warned that he would be shot with a less-lethal beanbag shotgun round or tase, he put the sword on the ground but refused to step away, continuing to argue. While Sergeant Wood attempted to de-escalate the situation, the subject began making motions to retrieve the sword. Officers Teague and Officers Baker were developing a less-lethal option should the subject have retreated to an involved vehicle. Officer Gabe Flores, Officer Kent Fandrum, Officer Teague, and Sergeant Wood all converged and wrestled the subject to the ground, stopping the threat. Because of the officer's poise, calmness, actions, and the subject's life was saved in this case, and no citizens were harmed. It's not noted in here, but I got a, an email from a witness who lived on that street, which was a lifetime retired mental health professional, who said that was textbook de-escalation. Very clearly, this gentleman put himself, our officers, and citizens at grave risk, and they did everything possible not to use deadly force, and so I'm happy to give them Dan Jones, David Vaughn, and Gabe Flores. Looks like Gabe is not with us this evening. Sergeant Dan Jones, Lieutenant Dave Vaughn, and Officer Gabe Flores. On August 27th, 2021, officers were dispatched to the Lyon Street Bridge, due multiple reports of a subject on the outside of the bridge railing hanging over the water. The subject informed Officer Gabe Flores, if any officers came within 20 feet of him, he would jump into the river. Officer Flores quickly communicated this information to responding officers. The Willamette River was about 100 feet below the crest of the bridge, and a fall would have likely been fatal. The subject began walking away from Officer Flores. Seeing this, Officer Dan Jones pulled ahead in order to provide a visual barrier, which enabled Sergeant Jones to begin verbal contact. The identity of the subject was learned, and Sergeant, now Lieutenant Vaughn, realized that he had talked to the subject on prior incidents. He used his rapport to talk to the subject and allowing him to get closer and was able to take a hold of the subject's risk, which then allowed Officer Gabe Flores to close the distance and take the subject to the ground safely. Officer Flores, Sergeant Jones, and Lieutenant Vaughn had a brief time to decide and act on a plan which no doubt saved this person's life, so we're happy to award them with a On November 13th, 2021, Officer Jim Estes responded to a welfare check. A crisis line in Nevada reported they were on the line with the subject advising they were near the Lynn County Jail, and the subject could not breathe. Officer Estes arrived on scene and approached, calling out the subject, who did not respond. He noted the subject was very pale, slightly bluish, and had a large rubber band wrapped around their neck. He tried pulling the wrapped rubber band off, but there were many, many layers. So he used his knife to cut through the layers and was able to remove the rubber band from the individual's neck. Officer Estes performed chest compressions, and the subject started to breathe and cough. Officer Estes's quick action that evening saved that subject's life. We're happy to award him a lifesaving award. We're happy to award him a life-saving award. So if you called 911 in our city after getting transferred from Lynn County Sheriff's Office, very likely you have had a chance to talk to Kelly or one of her coworkers. On July 3rd, 2021, Communication Specialist Kelly McMahon took a 911 call involving a suicidal subject. Kelly asked all the right questions and kept the caller engaged in conversation while officers were dispatched to the call. She told the individual what to expect when officers arrived on scene, encouraged them to never lift or point, or encouraged him to never lift or point the firearm at any officers. Kelly documented details notes to ensure officers were being updated regularly. She remained calm and composed throughout the entirety of the call, and for this, her actions and her compassion helped save the subject's life. Now, I'll tell you, this summary really doesn't do it justice. I think you talked to this gentleman for almost nine minutes on the phone, because he was deep into a park. She kept him talking on the phone rather than allowing him to fall back into his intentions, and very, very likely is responsible for saving his life, so we're happy to give her a life-saving award. On September 9th, 2021, Officer Matt Thomas responded to a threat call at a local group home. One of the residents was in a mental crisis, had a knife, and was threatening to kill themselves. Officer Thomas was able to engage in conversation with the distraught individual who was standing in the doorway holding the knife. The subject told Officer Thomas he wanted to commit suicide by cop. Officer Thomas talked with the individual for 35 minutes, eventually convincing him to drop the knife. The subject complied and was taken into custody and treated. If not for Officer Thomas's verbal de-escalation and rapport building with this subject, it would have likely ended differently. So we're happy to award a life-saving award to Officer Thomas. Officer Pastuma, Sergeant Pastuma, again. On Christmas Eve, 2021, Sergeant Pastuma responded to cover Officer Jim Estes for a restraining order violation, so it's a violation of a court order. Shortly after arriving with his recruit officer, Officer David St. Pierre, Officer Estes responded to a potentially deadly threat by discharging his firearm. Officer Pastuma immediately took charge of the incident and directed other officers to complete required tasks for successful resolution. He placed the male into handcuffs, directed another officer to move Officer Estes away from the scene, and stay with him while they applied tourniquets to the suspect's leg. Officer Pastuma's performance demonstrated his dedication to his fellow officers and the citizens of Albany, so we're happy to award him with the Medal of Valor. This is the Medal of Honor, and this is a quite significant one. On December 24th, 2021, the department received a report of restraining order violation at a local shelter. Officer Estes responded to the area where he located the subject nearby. He engaged the subject in conversation, was visibly upset. After a brief conversation about the intent of the arrest of the subject and taking him to jail, the subject made the comment that he was not going back to jail. He then pulled two knives from his pockets and brandished them both at Officer Estes. He then walked in a threatening manner, quickly closing the distance on Officer Estes. Officer Estes began retreating back towards his patrol car when the subject rapidly closed more of the distance. Confronted with a deadly threat, Officer Estes had no choice but to defend himself by addressing that threat. Officer Estes acted professionally and courageously towards the subject, who was acting in a criminal manner. So this is the Medal of Honor. Mayor, councilors, and citizens watching, and citizens in the audience, this very much exemplifies what we face every single day, and I think it is an absolute necessity that we give everybody a round of applause that's in public safety, as well as feel very proud of the work that they do every day in our city.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to all the officers and staff that received awards tonight, and all the families that are here. As the son of a retired police officer, I know the stress, and I understand the stress, and I do appreciate your support for them as they go out in uniform, undercover, to protect our community. So thank you all. Can we have rounds of applause for the families, please? Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation. It was fantastic. Next on the agenda is business from the council, business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments or do register to speak at our city's website under materials before noon on the day of the meeting, or in person at the meeting, and register to speak using the sign-up sheet. So, once everything settles down, we'll get started with the rest of the agenda. Wow. Cleared out. So, we had two people sign up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak or present to the council today? Is there anyone else that did not sign up, would like to present to the council today? I guess not. Okay, thank you. So first on the agenda is Trey Mork. He's an Albany resident, he attests to that. Cannabis dispensaries. Please put the sign down and be removed from the room. Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, that's for sure. That was a great award ceremony.
Sir, please tell us who you are.
My name is Trey Mork.
Yeah, three minutes, sir.
My primary residence is in Albany, yeah. Dear City Council and Mayor, I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. Some of you know me pretty well over the last couple of years, some of you don't. My name is Trey Mork, and I am the owner of Albany Alternative Health Solutions, a local cannabis dispensary. I have lived in Albany my entire life and wish to continue to do so. The purpose of me speaking is to try and enact regulations on cannabis dispensaries moving into this city and to protect your locally-owned businesses. The other local owners and I are asking the city to enact a 1,000-foot rule between cannabis shops as soon as possible. Our locally-owned dispensaries are suffering, and mine is taking the biggest hit due to the current zoning laws. I've had to lay off over half my staff in the last eight months, and it has not been a fun time. I've tried to reach out to some of the council before and was met with some adversity. One councillor even stated that multiple dispensaries next to each other is no different than having McDonald's and Taco Bell next to each other. However, I couldn't disagree with this statement more. If you want burgers, you go to McDonald's. If you want tacos, you go to Taco Bell. They don't sell any of the same products. Meanwhile, most dispensaries all carry the same products from the same brands. There isn't much you can do to differentiate yourself in this industry on product. These chains moving in have higher buying powers than us because they have a higher volume number of stores. These stores move in and sell the exact same product we have been selling for years at a cheaper price, forcing us to drop our prices to stay competitive even though we pay more for these products. If this continues, many of us will go out of business, and this is due in large part to a previous council's ruling. The local dispensaries of this city were already put at a huge disadvantage due to the council of seven years ago. They didn't allow us to sell recreational for the first year and a half, even though their own citizens voted for it. This cost the dispensaries of this city hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars. This also gave time for outside competition to grow and prosper while we could not. Now that Albany is open, huge competition is trying to move here. These are chain dispensaries that we simply cannot compete with. They not only had a year and a half of sales to get ahead of us, but they also have huge out-of-state and some even out-of-country backing. Most of these stores don't care about making a profit in this town, as their other dispensaries can keep them afloat. Their sole purpose is to pump out as many stores as they can and to sell to a higher buyer, as we have already seen Homegrown sell to Chalice within its first year of being in Albany. Chalice is a huge Canadian-backed cannabis company. These chain owners do not live here, they do not give anything to this city. The other local owners and I buy groceries, gas, clothes, dine out in the city, pay rent, or even own a home. The other local owners and I implore you to please protect us that are trying to build a life for themselves in their own city by enacting a 1,000-foot rule and protect the local businesses that fought tooth and nail over the years to be here. This council is different, and I would like this council to prove that they are different by protecting their locally-owned businesses. I have talked to the other local owners, who unfortunately could not make it here tonight, but they do have my support, and we would like to get together with you in different manners to talk to you about what to do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, so do we want to discuss, address it now, or would you like to do it in the business from the council?
I'm happy to address it now.
Well, who would like to talk about it now? Briefly. So come on back up, please. And City Attorney, please keep us out of any dirty water, that we're not making any mistakes. So, Councillor Novak was first.
Thank you. As someone who does small business in this town, I have a lot of respect for the way you've made your case, and I support you in this request for a 1,000-foot rule for reasons that, to my mind, make perfect sense.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Anyone else? Councillor Olson, please.
Yes, back in the day, we had fairly lengthy discussions about whether dispensaries like yours should be located 1,000 feet from a school or not, and we decided that spacing was a good idea, and I would think if we had spacing between dispensaries, that would be a good idea, too. So, yes, I'd be in favor of that.
Thank you very much.
And I think, in addition, I think we need to protect our local businesses, particularly when big, heavily-financed outside businesses move in and crowd out our local businesses.
Mr. Mork, possibly you could clarify for me, there's a difference, I believe, and maybe the City Attorney can weigh in on this, between a dispensary and a retail cannabis store. And are you still a true dispensary, or are you under the retail end of it?
There are hardly any true medical dispensaries left in the state, if that's what you're asking. Most have switched to the recreational retail cannabis store, because it's obviously more profitable.
So technically, this is another retail establishment that would be trying to come in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson?
Could you please elaborate on the 1,000-foot rule that you're requesting?
Yeah, so the OLCC put in their rules that it's up to cities if they want to enact upon it or not, but there is a rule that you can enact that forces dispensaries to be at least 1,000 feet away from each other. Most cities in this state have this rule, there are a few that don't. Even Portland, right now, has this rule.
Is that what you needed? You have anything? It was answered. So, my thoughts on the topic, as a businessman, I share an office building with, I'm the only insurance brokerage, but there are four hairdressers in my complex, and they do quite well, and all of them have their own client base. And so for me, as a person that is a businessman, I struggle with making the decision right now without having at least staff report to discuss it. So I would ask the staff to bring back a report on...
This would be a zoning issue anyways.
It would be a zoning issue, so it wouldn't be up to us. Would it be a planning commission?
It would go to Planning Commission first, yes.
Okay. So can I ask that, we have them take a look at that? Or?
The staff would bring a report back, bring it to the Planning Commission, and they can look at it and see.
So, Councillor, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Councillor, are you okay with bringing back a report and finding out what other cities are doing?
To find out what other cities are doing? I just, I guess I'm okay with that, but I don't want this gentleman and others in his position to be delayed for, I don't know how long that takes. It seems to me, if I understood you correctly, losing money hand over fist for quite a long while now, so...
It's been a tough couple of years, especially with COVID. That's definitely true. We had two big chain dispensaries open next, within 500 feet of me during COVID. They have multiple stores, as I stated. One of them already sold their multiple stores to a Canadian-backed company. Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to comment on the comment you made about the hairdressers. Everyone can get their hair done, in between adults, kids, anybody. There's only a select market for cannabis sales compared to that.
Okay.
And at a point, there will be so many dispensaries in town that, I mean, eventually some are just going to go out of business, that's just how business works. I just wanted to do that the local dispensaries that had to argue for medical and argue for recreational and fight to be in the position that we are today, that they don't have to go out of business, just simply because now the city wants to open to everyone.
Well, we'll take it under advisement, unless the council wants to talk about it tonight.
I have a question, sir. Why is it that you feel that you need to wait for a staff report to see what other cities are doing in this regard?
Because I'd like to know what other cities are doing. There's no reason, I want to know, my reason is, I want to know what other city councils are doing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, as a planning commission anyway.
Yeah, the staff would need to bring back a report, not just about other cities, but also about how it fits with our code. We'd have to look into placement of businesses. There are a host of other issues that would need to be looked at. You can't really, it's unfair to ask the council to consider something like this without the benefit of a little bit of research beforehand, and that's what the staff report will provide.
Thank you. So we understand that, as far as the hairdresser comment, but there are four women, four businesses that are functioning, that have the same product, same results, same service. So please understand, I know what you're going through, I mean, I've seen it, but there are four hairdressers in the same building, they do fine, okay? Just letting you know. Okay, go ahead, please.
Is the manager saying that you can bring back a report without going to the Planning Commission?
Certainly, we can do that.
You can bring, go ahead. So we can bring back a report to discuss it, but this is a zoning, this would be a zoning issue, and all the zoning issues are going, have to go through the Planning Commission first, just like when we initiated retail establishments, and we decided they were going to be within 300, they couldn't be within 300 feet of residential. That was a zoning issue that went through the Planning Commission first, that they voted on it, then it went up to the council, and then the council approved their recommendation or adopted the recommendation. But just to maybe help clear up a little bit, I'm not sure what staff you want to bring back a report. Do you want the Planning Department to bring back a report of how many dispensaries there are, where are they located, things like that? Because, for example, the 1,000 feet that's... Because, for example, the 1,000 feet that's right, that is in our city right now was within, you can't have a dispensary within 1,000 feet of a school. That's not an, that's not an Albany law, that's a state law.
It's a state law, right.
So we have to abide by that. The state did allow local municipalities to come up with reasonable seating, a lot of cities did put, kept 1,000 feet between dispensaries. A lot of those did that because they didn't want a lot of dispensaries in their town, and so they did it to keep people out.
To councillor Kupczynski's clarifying question, though, dispensaries are different than retail.
Well, when I'm saying dispensaries, I mean, I'm talking retail at this point, and Mr. Morgue is right, he, I think there's one medical dispensary left in the state of Oregon that's truly just medical dispensary. I think it's like, you know, the Blockbuster in Oregon, the only Blockbuster left in the United States. But yeah, there is, I know of one that, we looked at that this afternoon. But anyway, so yeah, there's another thing that is going to come up is, what are we being asked as in 1,000, if we were to do this, what, this is going to only, can only apply to new businesses because there's businesses that are within 1,000 feet now. Clearly, we can't say, well, you guys were here after this person, so you know, we would be in lawsuit galore there, so...
That's not what I'm asking.
Right. So anyway, it would be something we would have to go through, they would change the code, the zoning, and put, we would change the code, actually, in our Albany municipal code of where they're allowed to be located at, so...
So you're saying spacing is really a zoning issue? Is that right?
It basically is like a zoning issue, yes.
Okay.
Because right now, there, there's still, the way that our code is written, it still wouldn't allow a retail establishment to be within 300 feet of residential zoning. I think, I think right now, I'd have to go back and look at the code, I think we're allowed in light industrial and industrial zoning areas and in some commercials, as long as it's not within 300 feet of residential, so... And this was, we did this back in, I want to say 2016 or something, it's been a while, so...
So it does get complicated.
So, so let's, can we look at the, what the zoning is, get a report on that, and then maybe find out how many we have, or retail dispensaries we have in town, and...
Yeah, I'm trying to think, it would be, that would, probably David Martin will find out, yeah.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Morgue, we're taking, we're looking into it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you for your email, your very kind email, so thank you.
I was a little passive-aggressive in the emails, and I do apologize. I have been under a lot of stress these last couple of years with everything going on, so...
Understood. Thank you very much for your time. You have to come up and identify yourself and the test of where you live. It could be two weeks, it could be, you know, three weeks, it all depends on what staff, because they have also other workload that we heap on them, and we heap a lot of stuff on them, so, plus they have to, you know, work, so I can't tell you right now a definitive timeline. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of an agreement, a street light, street lighting agreement with Pacific Corp for LED conversion project. Director Bailey...
Alex, excuse me, you missed Lisa. Lisa Grotto signed up, too.
Oh, I'm so sorry, where's she at? I thought you'd left, I'm sorry. So, well, you're sitting behind the lady over here, you're sitting in my jacket, I think, and so I'm sorry. Downtown Association Director, Lisa Grotto, please.
Thank you.
I owe you a coffee.
Well, we may get to do that. I just wanted to give you a quick downtown update. As was mentioned, this is National Historic Preservation Month, which is very dear to the heart of the Albany Downtown Association and all our partners, and especially the city as well. There are lots of activities going on, and many of them are listed in our downtown newsletter that I'll have available after the meeting, as not to interrupt. We also have the hanging baskets will be going up on this Sunday, and if the weather permits, our Albany Alley will open on Saturday, and the new location is next to the caboose behind Novak's, Margin Coffee, and Sprinkles, so it'll be very visible and handy. The art dumpsters remain at the original location, and the three from our high schools will be joining them sometime this summer. We're working with the public services on timing of the clean dumpsters that then the artwork gets applied to that the students created. So those are highlighted on our newsletter. Also in the newsletter are some historic businesses that were highlighted. We have businesses going back 157 years, which would be the roots of the Albany Democrat Herald. Weatherford Thompson has been around for 147 years, Fisher Funeral, 110, Albany Civic Theater, 71, Heath Laundry, 69, and Sid Stevens Jewelers for 52. And then we'll have a few more to follow this month because we couldn't fit them all in. Nobody hopefully got shocked about our little notification about parking meters in downtown Albany. That was a photo from the 1940s. The other thing to note is just that we had a wonderful Mother's Day downtown, there were lots of things highlighted for that, so to let you know that. And then I just had a couple of little things that came across my desk that I'll share. One was a concern that I'll work with our APD on, that some of the Amazon trucks have decided that driving the wrong way on two-way streets, making them one-way streets, is a little concerning.
Wow.
And also, I had one business ask me if we could ever dim the lights on Lyon and Ellsworth to match the ambiance that we have on First. So when I was at a conference some years ago, there was a gentleman that was in the car with me and coming back from a Main Street event, and he had talked about a opportunity where you could actually make them bright, or dim, or green, or blue, or whatever, and we thought how lovely it would be at that time to have ambiance during dining hours and then put it full blast in the evening for the safety. So I don't know what's possible, but I do like to bring things forward when somebody brings it to me, so just kind of fun stuff. So we do hope that you come downtown, and I have 14 seconds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director. Yes, thank you very much, Director. Next is the approval of agreements, there's no one else that I've seen raise their hand. Approval of agreement, street lighting agreement for Pacific Corp for LED conversion, Chris Bailey, Director Bailey, and Kristen Preston. Director Bailey's already gone. Oh, she wasn't feeling well.
I think Chris may be dialed in at home.
Oh, there she is.
There she is, there she is. Yeah.
And you're muted, Director.
Oh, she's not speaking.
Okay.
She doesn't want to talk. Okay, so I'm going to give the staff report, but I also wanted to mention that in the audience tonight, we have representatives from Pacific Power and Energy Trust here with us, in case there's any questions you have for them. So what we're talking about tonight is an agreement with Pacific Corp, known as Pacific Power, for the conversion of Albany streetlights to LED fixtures. So most of the streetlights in the city are owned, operated, and maintained by Pacific Power. These lights are un-metered, and the city is a customer, so we're billed monthly based on the number of lights, the light types, and the service of lighting at night. These existing lights are either high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor light fixtures in a variety of wattages, depending on where they are located and what types of streets they're on. The city does own some of our own street lighting, parking lot lighting, city facility lighting, but these city-owned lights are metered and billed based on usage and not part of this program that I'm talking about this evening. Pacific Power has approached the city with a program to convert their company-owned lights to more efficient LED light fixtures, and the benefits of LEDs are several. They use less energy, cost less to operate, provide better light quality in fewer dark areas, improving the visibility, and most importantly, public safety. They direct, they direct the light more downward where you want it, so there is less light pollution. They come on instantly and don't have that warming-up period that our existing lights do, and more durable and last longer with less maintenance and repairs, so there's fewer outages. So in general, they're just more efficient and would greatly improve the light and public safety of our city. For this program, the city would pay for the materials and labor to make the conversion, and then we'd get billed at reduced rates for the LEDs, and along with improved lighting throughout the city. So Pacific Power would manage the entire project, complete the competitive bidding process for the lights and the electrical contractors, and so far, they've secured favorable price pricing for this work. So we've been working with Pacific Power, and we've identified 2,886 lights, to be exact, for this conversion, and most of the lights are what's known as the Cobra-style lights, and they're mostly found on the power poles, and they're sort of the arched lights with the light directing down onto the street. And there's just a handful of lights, 38 of them, that are known as post-top or town and country lights, and they're the more decorative lights out by Timberland Park on, along Price Road, and so they have a similar fixture that they can replace, but most of those Cobra-style. And when you switch lights to LEDs, usually there's a concern about color, and so the color of light is described using a Kelvin color temperature scale. So for LEDs, that scale goes from 1,000 Kelvin to 7,000 Kelvin. The 1,000 is on the warm end, and 7,000 is the cool end of the color. So for streetlights, Pacific Power is offering either 3,000 Kelvin or 4,000 Kelvin color. And so the city is producing, is proposing to do a mix of both. And our thinking is, for the busier streets, like arterials and collectors, we'd select the 4,000 Kelvin, which is a more neutral tone, and so about a third of those lights would be the neutral color. And for the remaining two-thirds of the local streets, we've selected the 3,000 Kelvin, which is the warmer color. And so now I'm going to talk about costs. The street lighting, the monthly bills are paid out of the street maintenance budget, and so we pay about $500,000 a year for street lighting. So for this 2,886 lights that we've identified, the proposed level of LED and what we'd convert them to for LEDs, this project is expected to cost the city $549,996. And that translates into an annual savings of energy costs, which is estimated at $112,830 per year. So that's a return on investment in just under five years, which is pretty good for long-term costs that we'll have to pay for lighting. Additionally, the Energy Trust of Oregon is currently offering incentives for streetlighting efficiency projects. The Energy Trust estimates that the city will save almost 1.8 million kilowatt-hours per year with this conversion from the old-style light fixtures to these LEDs. This qualifies the city for an estimated $231,700 in incentive dollars back to the city once the project is completed. After these incentives, the city will have spent $318,236 on this project, improving the city's return on investment to just under three years. So we've been talking about this project for many years now, and the previous estimates, we anticipated it would cost about $700,000 to do this project, but prices have come down, along with the incentives, it makes really an excellent project, along with the ongoing annual savings. Pacific Power anticipates that the conversion work could start in late July and be mostly complete by the end of the summer, with all complete by the end of the year. Staff recommends that the council approve the attached agreement with Pacific Power to convert 2,886 streetlights in Albany to more efficient LED lights at a cost of $549,936. And the city would pay Pacific Power out of street capital, where there are adequate funds to cover costs, this cost of the project. And then the incentive dollars from the Energy Trust would be reimbursed to the street capital fund, making the total impact to the fund approximately $318,236. And so that's what I have tonight, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Thank you very much, Kristen.
Kristen.
Councillor Kupczynski?
Yes, just a quick question. When you say Cobra-style lights, does that include the residential neighborhoods?
Yes, there are some Cobra-style.
Some, but eventually, will all of those lights be turned into LEDs, just all the general residential lights? Is that part of the plan, long-term?
Yeah, most of the lights are Cobra-style, and so they're all throughout the city.
Yeah, the ones in our neighborhood, they take forever, carnal.
Yeah, that is, that does, I didn't know, what was the scale of a Cobra light was, that fell into that, so thank you.
Councillor Smith, and then councillor Johnson.
I've been looking forward to this happening for many years, and I like the idea of freeing up money that's going now to lighting, to more pothole patching. Yep. That's, that's just a delightful turn of events, so...
Yep.
Thanks for pursuing this.
Sure.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Kristen, that's what, you said there's 231,000 in incentive funds, so that would be the 549 minus the 231, so actually, our return, I mean, actually, it's going to be, take less time to make it up. So that's probably another, a good year and a year and a half, so...
Yeah, it's going from just, if we didn't have the incentives, it'd be like almost a five-year payback, and now it's almost three.
I mean, it's a good return on investment, so I'm totally for it, thank you.
Thank you. Councillors over here? Councillor Novak?
Yes, I do have a question. I like the idea of amber colors and neutral colors, and forgive me, I don't want to be off-base here, but I'm just wondering, the lights that are on Second and Ellsworth, where they're so bright, and they're kind of like a landing strip, I don't know if those are LED, but if there's a way to make them be more neutral and amber, and maybe match the streets, like on First Avenue, they're, they're very amber, on Second, they're bright white sort of landing strip color, and again, I don't want to be out of line, but since we're talking lights...
You want those, those mood lighting that...
Well, are those LED lights, the really bright ones, are those already LED, or is there a chance?
They are, yes, the ones on Second and Third are LED, but I think those are the 3,000, the warmer light, and I think maybe Ellsworth and Lyon are the neutral light.
Forgive me, those, they're definitely, if warmer means more amber, and cooler is more white, bright, they are definitely not in the, in the amber range. They are bright white, and I would love to see if there's a way to adjust them and make them, sort of like what the Downtown Association Director said, if we could make the match on First Avenue, which is our showcase street, I actually, I believed that when they changed the lights on Second and on Ellsworth, that they were going to be more historical and matching that warm ambiance, and they just are not that at all.
Well, I would say that, you know, the main purpose of street lighting is visibility and public safety, and so the ones on First are not LED, and, you know, those are, you know, in comparison, the new ones seem bright, but the old ones are very dim, and so they don't provide as much good light that I think that we want. And I don't know, Chris, do you have anything, honestly?
I do appreciate public safety, absolutely, I'm just wondering if there's anything, anyway, since we're on the topic of lights, if there's any way to adjust the warmth and the coolness to make it more, I don't, you're the experts on lighting, I'm not, I just would love them...
I am not an expert, but we do have them in the audience. But I don't, I don't know that there's, that we want to adjust them down. I mean, we chose them so that we would have good visibility, and I know that the, you know, the police chief is very supportive of this project, and getting better visibility on our streets is, is the most important part.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, councillor. Councillor Olson has something.
Yes, are you saying that you can't match the lighting that's on First Street with the new lights?
No, those aren't LED lights, and so new LEDs won't match the lights that are on First Street.
You don't have any choice of color with the new LED lights?
We do have a choice of color, but there's only two choice options, and so we're choosing the more warmer ones in the, in the local streets, and then the more neutral ones on the busier streets.
So, so I'd like to get back on track?
You answered my question, but I didn't understand the answer.
So we're getting off track?
My understanding that your answer is no, you can't match the color of the lights that are presently on First Street.
That's true, we can't.
So we're getting off track?
Well, let me ask you this, then, could I, could I talk to her?
Well, let me, give me a second, we're, we need to deal with this, because that's a different discussion. We're talking about a totally different set of lights. We're opening another can of worms, we can do it under business from the public, if you don't mind.
Well, do I get a chance here after a while?
Yes, you do, as soon as we get done with the, get the business from the council, please bring that back.
Well, I know that the color of the lights is a concern, and I, it may be that some folks from Pacific Power might want to address the color.
Pacific Power, come up. Come up, Pacific Power. We vote, you guys open the worms, let's go. Councillor Olson wants to finish his thought. Councilor Olson wants to finish his thought. Can you please tell us who you are? Thank you.
I am Kelly Wade Allred. I am the Streetlight Manager for Pacific Corp., also Pacific Power, Rocky Mountain Power. So I take care of all of Oregon. The City of Albany was given our proposal for the new rates that we've issued. It's a customer-funded project, as she stated. So specific to the lights that are in question, I'm actually not local here, I'm from Salt Lake, and so I'm intending to drive them tonight and see what they look like. Because there is the chance that you might have bought adjustable products, that they do have the adjustable rate that changes the light. It doesn't necessarily change the color, but it can dim the wattage. So it can take it from like 100 watts, something lower. So we can find out if that's what you guys had chosen, because those are not actually lights that Pacific Power owns. So they are not included in this project. The lights that are included are the, as you said, the Cobra heads, they're mostly through your residential, all your arterials, collector roads, and then the four-sided post-tops that are by your park, what was that park? Timberland Park.
Timberland Park.
Yeah. So the city has opted not to touch the decorative lighting downtown at this point, because there was some initial discussions that some of the lighting downtown wasn't everybody's favorite, or they were kind of on the fence. So as far as our project, we weren't intending to touch the downtown lighting that is considered decorative, so.
So you're talking about just the Cobra head lights out in the...
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're doing just the Cobra heads and then Timberland Park, that's what's intended on the proposal.
Okay, well, the Cobra head by my house recently went out. Well, I guess it was a couple of years ago, went out. And I thought that was just great. It was way too bright. And one of the neighbors reported, and they replaced the light. Well, the trees have grown up a little bit, and they've shaded us some, but I hope you don't make it a whole lot brighter in our neighborhood.
We've got some that are around the city, but I think all of them that have been installed upon failure in the last couple of years are the 4,000K. And I want to say they're mostly on your arterials. I have pictures on my phone about, like, what some of them look like, as we've installed these projects recently in multiple cities across our territory. Something to know about LEDs, they do come on immediately, and they also are extremely bright when they first come on, because they're, it's the first time they fired up. And it takes about two to three months for kind of them to get to their happy run rate, where the color kind of tapers off.
Softens up.
It does. And so that's part of what we found, as we started doing these projects, we historically only offered the 4,000K. And because of communities like Albany, then a bunch of them in the Utah area where I'm from, they wanted more of a dark-sky-friendly light, that was the 3,000K, so it's less stark on your eyes when you look at it. It's a lot less, almost glary, if you will. It's a lot more pleasant to look at, and it doesn't sting. There's a couple of different, just lighting words, but if you look at some of the 4,000K lights, it's almost, after looking at multiples, it kind of feels like it's burned your eye. The 3,000K is a lot less obtrusive. There is an intended level with each of the lights, as far as the way the light is thrown. So in your residential areas, the city has chosen a Level 2 light, so there's a little bit of backlight that should hit your sidewalks, but then the most of the light should go forward and into the streets. So there shouldn't be obtrusion up into your homes or into the front yards, and things like that. So there's been a lot of consideration put into this.
Okay, glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, I really appreciate it. So, Council, we have a resolution on page 12.
I move we approve a resolution authorizing the execution of a street lighting agreement with Pacific Court DBA, Pacific Power, for LED conversion project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Could I ask?
Thank you.
Sometime in the future, are we going to talk about our lights on First, Second, and Third?
On business from the council, you can bring it up.
You say the council has to bring that up in order to discuss it?
Well, if you want the staff to do something with it, you have to let them know you want that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar, adoption of consent calendar. Any councils have anything they'd like to remove or change?
Yes, sir.
Well, so, okay, so I'll call Councilor Novak first.
Thank you kindly. Just a few small adjustments with regard to the minutes on March 21st. I wasn't actually questioning what tax increment financing is, I was asking if they're looking to TIF for funding of the East Albany Plan, so I would like that noted, if possible, please. And then, secondly, on the April 13th minutes, my business from the council is not mentioned at all. I spoke at that time on how glad I was to live in a town where the mayor would visit the home of a citizen with an issue. This was in regard to Mr. DeRosa, Mr. and Mrs. DeRosa, and the situation with the noise out by the YMCA. I said how much I appreciated that our city manager was going to work with the mayor, the staff, and both parties concerned to bring resolution. I made these comments, there's not one word of it, and I have to say, it was very disappointing to me in the last meeting when Mr. DeRosa was here, and he mentioned that it had been a full month and nothing had taken place. So, can we please put my comments in? And I know that apparently now, there is the officer who was going to get the noise-measuring, whatever that's called, and apparently, he's going to do that this week. But I would still like my comments in the business of the council.
Thank you. Councilor, you done? Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Smith?
I read through all of the consent calendar, and I would like to pull Item B3, the minutes from the joint, sorry, the minutes from the joint meeting, March 21st, 2022, between the council and the Planning Commission. There were a number, I think there were three different sentences that were missing some words, and they don't make sense without the words there. I have notes that I have forwarded to the staff already regarding that.
Is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Councilor Kupczynski?
I move we approve the minutes as written, with the exception of adding information from Councilor Novak, and removing Item B3 from Councilor Smith, and sending a letter of thank you for service for the resignations from the different commissions.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a staff report. It is requests for city sewer service for property outside the city limits, 3605 Circle Drive, southeast. Director Bailey and Gordon Stephens Meyer, you don't look like either one of them. So, good morning, Stacey, good afternoon, Stacy. And there's Director Bailey there.
So, yeah, you're stuck with me. I'm going to go ahead and try to cover this staff report. So in this memo, it explains that staff was contacted by the Lynn County Health Department about a health hazard involving sanitary sewer at 3605 Circle Drive. This property is within the urban growth boundary, but it is located outside city limits. The sewage health hazard that exists is because the house has actually settled, and so the entrance pipe to the septic system, it has to go uphill, which doesn't work. Lynn County Health, they can't issue a septic repair permit or allow replacement of the septic system. There are State of Oregon regulations, they require when a property is within 300 feet of public sewer, the property has to connect. And the Health Department has requested, just because of the situation, that the city allow the property to connect to public sewer as soon as possible. Because the property is outside of city limits, the Albany Municipal Code does require some conditions in order for the property to connect. And so staff is recommending that council authorize the connection under these conditions. They are, the property has to submit an irrevocable request to annex. They would also need to sign a petition and waiver to participate in future construction of sewer that is, I guess, interior of this subdivision. And then they would also have to pay all the required fees. Just for some background, granting this approval, it would be consistent with past practice. There's actually two other properties in this neighborhood that have had septic systems fail, and council granted approval to connect to sewer under the same conditions.
Council, any questions? Councilor Smith?
I just have a comment, and it's a, it won't be long, but it's big. This is the entrance of the elephant into the room, the elephant being that fairly large island where this property is located. It's, people think it's in the city limits, but it's not. And I think it's, it may be time for us to review our islands and peninsulas that would make sense to annex. Yeah, that's, that's all I'm, I'll comment in there. And I've also, I sympathize with this homeowner, in particular with the pipe. I've stayed in campgrounds where the sewer connection was here, and the trailer was here, and, yeah, you just have to go someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Kupczynski?
I'll pile on with what Councilor Smith has just mentioned. I think we need to bring it up for a discussion in the not-too-distant future about that possibility of the island. Put it on, just put it on the roadmap for something down the road for us to take a look at.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson, you have anything?
Well, I agree that we should, you know, annex them in. But the last time we were talking about this, I thought they had to request to be annexed in, so I'm a little confused right now. Which is it? Can we go ahead and annex them in? I mean, that, we can by a vote, I guess. But then I was told, no, we can't do that unless they asked to...
So we have a great attorney sitting right over there.
Yes, we do.
So I'm not familiar with the island you're talking about, first of all, so I have to, I would look at that. But yes, if it's adjacent, is adjacent to the city, and we can annex it in. We annexed in all of North Albany at one point, because of a public health emergency, back before my time, but that was the reason that North Albany became part of the city, I think, because of the failed septics and stuff. So if there's a situation like that going on, we could do that. It'd be better if they did ask to come in, otherwise, we would have to go through a process that's not as simple as just saying yes, but...
We'd have to go to Luba or something like that?
No, well, I don't want to say we wouldn't have to go to Luba. We could be taken to Luba, potentially, if, you know, if somebody, I would, again, I don't know how many people we're talking about in this island. So if there were people who didn't want to be annexed, then they could probably try to argue it, but we've been through this, well, I've been through this process before, not in Albany, but in Lincoln City, so I know how it'll play out, so.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have something? Councilor Thalaby?
I just have a clarifying question about if a section is annexed, are then they, they are then required to connect to the city services? Is that correct?
Yes.
So that would then, if those, all of those?
Well, there's, we do, if Chris is on the line, or maybe...
Okay, Chris.
I think, Mayor, if I could, we're not asking to annex this property tonight, obviously. They do have to sign an irrevocable request for annexation, because that's just one of the conditions to get city sewer service. I do know that Matthew Rutgers is working on an item to bring to the council and talk about annexations of islands that exist right now in the city. I don't know if this is part of that, because this is a large area relative to some other islands in town. But I know that he's going to bring that in and talk with the council more about that, so, I hate to cut the discussion short, but I just wanted to say that there will be something to come from this, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Hope you're feeling better. Go ahead, Councilor Olson.
Oh, yes, I'd like to ask, are these people doing without facilities because they're not connected, or are they getting by somehow?
I have not spoken directly to them. The staff engineer, or the assistant city engineer, Gordon Stephens Meyer, has been speaking with them, but it's my understanding that they're just getting by.
Okay. Well, seeing how they have to sign up, that they're not going to object to being annexed when the time comes, I don't see any problem with hitching them up at this point, and when the time comes, we'll annex them. I'd be in favor of hitching them up.
Thank you. Council, do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion, or just, wait, just tell staff to go ahead and...
Well, it says here on the agenda, we need a motion.
Okay. I move we authorize staff to pursue the process by which they get a sewer connection.
We have a motion, and we have a second over here. Thank you, Councilor Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you, motion passes. Okay. Business from the council. Last week, I started over here, this week, I'm going to start on that side. Councilor Novak?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Kupczynski?
Just another anecdote from my viewpoint is, when people come into the Carousel, I see an awful lot of Bird scooters running around town, and they're parked out outside the Carousel. I have to admit that I don't see too many of them, well, actually, I can say I've seen zero of them wearing helmets, but they look like they're having a heck of a lot of time talking to one of the groups that were picking them up because they were, the batteries were low. It tells them on their system that they need to go pick them up. Anecdotally, apparently, we have upwards of 120 of them now in town, according to that person. Two different entrepreneurs that are doing it under guy's approval from Bird.
That explains the color difference. There's two different colors. That's, okay, makes sense.
Okay, I'll take your, I'll take your word for it. So I've only seen the ones with the white frames on them, running around town, so...
Well, I suppose there's something red on one of them, and the other one has a different color.
Oh, okay. But anyway, I don't, people seem like they're having a lot of fun, so that's all I can say.
Did you have anything else about the Carousel?
I'll let you take on that.
Okay. Okay. Councilor Smith?
I was on my morning walk this morning and found two Bird scooters in my neighborhood, four miles from downtown. That was kind of a surprise. One had disappeared by this evening, the other one was still there. I have two items, legitimate items. The first is that, on Monday, I brought up the topic of consideration of a fireworks ban, and the response to that from the council was silence. So I wanted to put a lid on that and decide one way or another if we want to consider that, or what I should, how I should respond to my constituent, and others who bring up the same topic.
I would have no problem with not having the fireworks. It affects too many things, it's too dry, and it's, I mean, the pets, if nothing else. It just, you know, you have to give them a tranquilizer to take it up through the night, so I would be in favor of not having them.
I have a question. This would mean that then families with little ones, where they light the snails and do the little tiny fireworks, that we'd be saying none of that, no fireworks of any kind?
That's, that would be a question to answer. Those are legal fireworks, so the things that don't leave the ground are legal. But the ones that should be done in a stadium somewhere are not legal, and those are the ones that fly through the air and land on your roof.
I want to cast my vote in favor of nothing illegal. I don't like when I hear loud booms past midnight, or even up to midnight. There are things that are illegal for a reason, and I would be not opposed to keeping them that way. I think if someone wants to see a fireworks show, like, we used to have one, I think, in Monteith Park or Bryan or somewhere, that you could, you could see it from a distance, but it wasn't, it wasn't some neighborhood blowing things up and, you know, terrorizing...
People are bringing the legal fireworks in. I agree with you.
One thing that I would comment is, I had this request last year from someone, but it was late in the season, I believe it was around Labor Day, and I spoke to the fire chief about it to ask him his opinion, and he said that it would be, if we were to consider something like this, it would be a... if we were to consider something like this, it would be a good idea to talk about it early in the year, like six months ago, when local nonprofits are planning their major fundraising activities for the year, a lot of those involving fireworks sales. And they're making, they're signing contracts with the people that they buy them from and so on. So this might, it might be too late this year. It would, it could inconvenience a lot of civic organizations that are, and churches and so on, who are planning on fireworks sales.
So, so thank you for that. And so, does the staff have enough information?
I, thanks for bringing that up, Counsel Smith. I would also recommend that you think about enforcement, because you can say something is illegal. And in this case, it won't, I, I believe that it won't really change things. I would also point to the success we had last year with our public affairs campaign and asking people to, emphasizing the safety component, emphasizing the fact that it was a very dry year, which, by the way, this year, it's not a very dry year. So there's just a, in, in addition to the, the nonprofits, there's just a couple of things to think about. And I would invite Sean to comment, too, if he's got anything further.
Well, let's see. Go off what Peter said, I guess. You're right about the not being a dry spring. I think we had the wettest April on record, actually. And May doesn't look like it's really letting up any. But in any event, fireworks that are illegal now are still going to be illegal on the Fourth of July. So the ones you see going up in the air and exploding, they haven't been legal in Oregon. People buy them in Washington, or they buy them on reservations, they buy them other places, and they, they shoot them off. They're still illegal. But I think, Marsha's not here, but I think they, they don't have the resources to respond to every fireworks call on the Fourth, the Third and Fourth of July. They might respond to some. I, I think I've had a couple in municipal court, actually, over the past couple of years. I've had one or two. But for the most part, I, I mean, when, my old neighborhood, there were people lighting those ones off that were going up 100 feet in the air and exploding, and nothing, no one, no one came or nothing, so maybe no one called. But anyway, they're still, they're still illegal. And then if we're talking about the little things, the sparklers that you light and that kind of stuff, then you're going to have to start regulate. I mean, if they're, if we're going to make those illegal in the city limits, then we're going to have to let those businesses know that set tents up all over town that are selling them, because then they're selling illegal fireworks in the city at that point, so. But otherwise, yeah, I think maybe, maybe if we're going to look into that, it might be good to get that maybe a little earlier than now, before the Fourth, because I think we probably do have some businesses that are already leasing property.
Yeah.
But, you know, so.
So I, I know last year we did a public, I did a public safety announcement, and people really liked the outtakes, so we'll probably do something like that again. Matt Harrington did some with the fire department and I, and the fire chief, and one of the police officers did a public service thing. And it was a lot of views, but people did reach out to me and say, you know, I'm glad you did that. So we'll probably do some more of that, and maybe have some of you counselors do it for your ward, so they can see you, and you can say, please be careful with fireworks, be smart about it, put your fire hose out.
That's definitely a good idea. And the only thing that I have some concern about, if, if we were to say this year, we're going to make those illegal, the ones that you can buy in these tents that set up around the city, is that I think is going to encourage more police calls, because they're going to, oh, they're breaking the law, I'm calling, and, and I don't know what this match is going to, if they're going to be overwhelmed or what, and, you know, so. But I like the, the public safety announcements are, are good, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just one other added comment. Other communities in Oregon have banned them outright, and I'd like to know what the results and consequences of that have been.
I know Lincoln City just banned theirs as well.
Yeah, and I think Bend has, you know, and so the question then becomes, what are the other nonprofit organizations or for-profit organizations doing for fundraising? How that's impacted them, et cetera, et cetera.
Lincoln, Lincoln City has a, has a, two, actually, displays usually. They'll have one on the Fourth of July down at the, down at where they call the Taft District by the docks. And then usually a day or two before that, the Chinook Winds Casino puts on another one. Have, have lived over there for a while. I, I can tell you that there's a ton of what we would call illegal fireworks under the Oregon laws that they use, they shoot off at the beach routinely there. They do have police on the beach, patrol on the beach.
Firemen are probably out there as well.
And, yeah, but they, they, it's basically, when, when I've watched it happen, it's usually, hey, you can't do that. Or they may confiscate them, they're not taking people to jail or anything like that, so.
It's a little different firing them off at the edge of the ocean than somewhere in a dry, dry area.
And I know Independence has a, has a Fourth of July fireworks display, too, because I can see it from the back deck of my house.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Olson?
I'm going to vote no to yet another law on saying no to fireworks. I think we have enough laws.
Okay. You have anything else for the council? We, we're business with the council right now.
We have business with the council, yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment on that? I'm a little confused. Are we saying that we wanted to make?
She wants a report.
That's what I got, right?
Yeah, but, but to ban everything, I mean, I'm, I'm with, you know, the ones, apparently, everything that we're against is already illegal. So I'm wondering, why would we want? I mean, I am for doing it, but I'm, just after everybody talked, I thought, well, wait a minute, it is illegal. So, yeah, the little sparklers and stuff, I don't have a problem with that. So I just wondered, am I, am I thinking something different? Because it's already illegal, so why do we even have to do it? I'm just questioning, I'm just.
They're already illegal, but people use them. And with a ban, they wouldn't be allowed to use them without more serious consequences. Probably wouldn't be allowed to, to use anything in, for fire safety reasons as much as PTSD reasons and, and hysterical pets. But what I'm hearing is, I'm, I'm, I'm filtering this through my own, my own lens here, of course. But I understand that, that most of us object to the noise and the fire danger and all of that of excessive neighborhood fireworks displays. I'm with you there. But it's impossible to enforce. It's late in the season to talk about it, much less try to do something about it. And I think that we ought to do what we did last year and emphasize the public safety factor and just being neighborly. That, that was successful, thank you for reminding me of that. I think that's what we, we ought to do, and we ought to all carry that message with us to our neighbors. So thank you for letting me bring that up again. May I add one more thing? I had one more thing on my list.
Please, Counsel.
That was, I was encouraged by the presence of the police department this evening and the wealth of awards that were given out. I've never seen that many given out in one year. And it was for one calendar year. It wasn't a COVID-era thing, it was one year. That was a lot. I, and I, I hope people listen to the number of times that the chief used the term "less lethal", because we're talking about people who use their voices and their body language and their wits to solve a problem rather than weaponry. I, we have very, every good reason to be proud of our police department. And we have good reason to feel safe here. We don't have the same police issues that are happening in other cities that make the news way too often. Keep in mind that if it makes the news, that means it's out of the ordinary. But out of the ordinary is becoming very, very common. And I, I, I've always been, I've always been proud of our police department, even when I was covering them as a newspaper reporter. As a resident, I, I feel safe here. And I, I'm consistently impressed with the caliber of people that we hire, with the length of time they stay here. It's a good place to work. And we, we ought to be proud of that, and we ought to, we ought to tell other people that, that we, we don't have those problems, because we make sure that we get the right people from the start, and we keep them. I, I don't know, it's, I'm rambling, I apologize for that. But it, it's a good crew we have, there's something to be very proud of.
Agreed, thank you. Counselor Olson?
Yes. I, I would want to bring up the Vine Street situation again. And I've had comments from my neighbors, and they appreciate the surveyors coming out and defining where the property lines are. And they've not only defined property lines along our right-of-way, along the Vine Street right-of-way, but also some divisions between properties, and they've appreciated that, too. They're thinking about maybe moving some fences. But I'd like to call a moratorium on any demands that we have people along there get everything off of our right-of-way, right-of, immediately. Because some of these properties are more difficult than we might think. And it's particularly the properties between 10th and 11th, and 11th and 12th. And I'm wondering if there ever was any traffic through there, particularly after the time that the canal was built. Because the water in the canal is about the same level, or maybe a little bit higher, than the level of those backyards. And so there's a sizable berm that goes up from the property owner's backyard and then back down to the water in the canal. And if we told them they had to get completely off our property, they would have to, if they wanted a backyard fence. And Mr. Weaver, for instance, who came and talked to us a couple of weeks ago, he's got a dog that he feels he needs to confine behind a fence, and I think that's one of our rules. He would have to build that right at the base of that berm. And if the city is going to go along and take a look at that berm and make sure it isn't water seeping through, they're going to have to somehow crawl down between the berm and the fence. And so I, I think we need to consider a little bit more before we tell everybody that they have to get, get everything off of there. And I would like to say that it's when we're going to do something like replacing a water pipe, or maybe beautifying the canal somehow. I don't think we need to demand that they get everything off of there, so. I'd like, I'd like, and do we need a motion of some kind to put a, a moratorium on this until we can study it a little bit more? Or can we just suggest it, and would that be sufficient?
The staff are acting on council's direction from about six months ago. So if you see, Chris Bailey has activated her, her, her camera, so she'll comment in a minute. But I think, yes, you'd need to make a motion and direct us to do otherwise than what we've already been directed to do.
So before we do that, it's eight o'clock, it's two hours. We agreed that we would vote to continue past two hours, a while ago. Huh? Is it three hours? Oh, 9:00 PM, you're right, you're 9:00 PM. 9:00 PM, so I'm sorry.
Can we finish this?
We're not going to do that till 9:00 PM. I don't want to be here at 9:00 PM, so, but you know. Thank you. So you have comments, Director Bailey?
I was just going to say what Peter said, that we are working on the direction that was voted on by the council when this item came up. So if you want us to do something differently, then we're going to need different direction from the council.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we slow down on this action on the Vine Street right away. And I'm not sure what I want to do. I, I would, I'd say, let's stop any progress until our next meeting, where we can discuss it more fully.
Can I ask a question, Counsel?
That's a motion.
Okay, let me ask a question first. What is the, what is the timeline that you guys set?
Six months.
From a month ago?
It's probably been about a month, I guess, yeah.
Okay. So you want a, you want a motion for it to bring it back next meeting?
Uh, to the next meeting.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no?
No.
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 No. And I want to explain my vote. We had a discussion about this on Monday, and I was satisfied with the direction that Director Bailey said that was going on. It was, it was a very slow, deliberate process, and only, only the most important things are being acted on. And that's being done very, very slowly. So I don't think anybody's going to be unduly inconvenienced immediately. I think this is going to take some time, and the, the staff is very sensitive to that. So that's, that's the reason I, I don't think this is a necessary.
I'll ask Ms. Bailey here, is, is that right, that you're proceeding slowly and carefully?
I, yes, Counsel Olson, I think so. And I think what I'll do is talk with Stacy and Gordon, and maybe we can meet with Mr. Weaver at his property if he seems to be the, the person that's expressed the most concern to you. And talk about what we could do there.
I went over and looked at it, and I am a lot more concerned than I was to begin with, yes. Maybe, maybe you could go and take a look at it, too.
Sure, yeah, I think we'll reach out to him directly, but, and if we do run into another major problem, I hope that either we'll bring it to you or you bring it to us, and we can make sure we get it resolved.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, so the motion failed?
Could we do, I'm sorry, could we do a roll call vote? Because I didn't catch who voted against, and I need to name them in the minutes.
So, so we had two, two yeses, four, two ayes, correct? Or go do a roll call vote. Go ahead, do your thing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
I was a yes. Can I add something or not right now?
She's doing her thing.
Go ahead.
Counselor Bartholomew?
No.
Counselor Kupczynski?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Thank you.
So the motion failed?
It failed.
Sir? Is it permissible to?
So we're, we're doing business from the council, so next up is Counsel Bartholomew?
I'm, this was just with regard to what we were discussing just now. So I just wanted to add that, given that Director Bailey says that they are willing to work with this gentleman who presented his case the other day, because I was really concerned about that, too. So that makes me feel better, and I really appreciate that. And if you are looking at things on more of a case-by-case basis, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counsel Bartholomew?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Counsel Johnson?
I just have one small thing regarding the Bird scooters. I was so pleased to, to see the article in the Democrat Herald where the reporter got so excited that she couldn't wait to get on the Bird. And I thought, you know, it's so nice to hear some good news and some feeling about it. And so, and it's strange to see them just sitting on the corner, and nobody seems to be damaging them. It's like they're leaving them alone. I mean, we're probably going to be like the OSU campus pretty soon and have all these little robots around, and they're creepy. But I just wanted to say it was really nice to hear that report and that they were excited about it, too. So I'm hoping it keeps on going. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much, Counselor. Just a couple of things for me. I was really happy to see, one, the, the quality of the police officers we have in our department, the awards that were given. And I really do support our police department, and I want everybody to know that. We can be proud of our police department, so, for me. And then the If It Were, If It Were Mayor contest, even though the high schools didn't get involved because it was so late in the game, the young people in our city care about our city. I can't tell you how much they care about our city. Matthew can attest to it because he witnessed it, but I could, I had to stop asking, is there any more questions? When I have two young ladies, fifth graders, discussing how many parks we have and why we have so many parks, or, it was amazing. So if you ever get a chance to engage a young person about the city of Albany, please do. I, I think you'll, you'll learn so much, because they're watching. They're watching city council meetings now because of that contest. So please talk to the young folks. And then last thing, the Bird scooters, I've seen them as far out as Elmer's, all the way down to North Albany. I haven't heard of any accidents or anything yet, which is a good thing. But I do know that people are talking to me about helmets. There's young kids on them without helmets, and that's a safety concern for me. As an insurance guy, it's a big liability issue for their parents. So I'm hoping that Bird will take action and make sure that people are at least. So I'm hoping that Bird will take action and make sure that people are at least being, living up to the helmet laws of the city. And with that, I will then go to, oh, never mind. Do city manager report?
Did, it looked like Counselor Kupczynski had a, no, okay. All right. I, I too want to thank you for your, you know, the ceremonial aspects of a city council are important. It took a long time tonight, but I think all the proclamations and certainly the recognition were well worth the time. So thank you for bearing with. This meeting will be followed by an ARA meeting. I just want to remind people that if you're joining virtually, it's a different link. So people will have to find that link which has been provided and, and join up. I would, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend a short break for people. And then with respect to the consent agenda with Counselor Novak's objections and Counselor Smith's objections with meeting minutes and the clerk will review them. I, I just want to take the opportunity to remind councilors that the minutes are meant to be what are loosely called skinny minutes. So they are not meant to be a verbatim summary of what councilors say. So sometimes, you know, it'll be, well, all the time, it'll be up to the clerk to make her best judgment about how best to summarize the subject of the conversation with the knowledge that anybody who's interested can then go to the video of the meeting itself and catch not only the words that the counselor used, but their eyes, their body language and all elements of communication that, that make up communication. And then lastly, Counselor Novak, I, I wanted to point out that when Mr. DeRosa was here the other night, his comments were not, they were not entirely accurate. He mentioned five weeks without anything. Chris Shindel within one week of us being noted about measurements, about noise. He's been, not only has he been taking measurements of noise throughout that neighborhood, but he's also been talking to other neighbors, knocking on doors and asking them for their input, including the dentist, the dentistry that's there. Though, there has not been a big outpouring and the measurements that he's taken have not been excessive either. The last thing he needed is a measurement inside the home of the complainant. He's called to try to, to take that measurement, but he's been waiting for a, a call back. On the other side of the coin, the YMCA has taken significant steps to address the situation. And as a matter of fact, their CEO has scraped together $10,000, which, you know, as a nonprofit is not an easy thing for them to do, to arrange for spray foam to be installed inside that covered play area. And he's also managed to arrange for a contractor to do that on the 27th of this month, which if you've heard our Public Works folks, is pretty amazing to get a contractor to do it in, in that short timeframe. So he's still, we are still working on it. There'll be more to come back to you. And hopefully that solution that the YMCA has will, will have some good impact and we can give you some positive news. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, city manager, Peter. Next meeting, the item 12 on the agenda. Next meeting is May 23rd of our work session at 4:00 PM here in Chambers. And after that, May 25th, 2022 at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Please take five minutes, five minutes so we can roll over to the other agenda. Thank you all for attending this evening.